All right, welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Before we get started, will you please stand and let's recognize the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
... one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we just, we exited executive session, so we do apologize for the delay for the start time. So, first order of business, scheduled items, 7 o'clock, we have no scheduled items. Next order of business is residents, I see no residents in our presence, so we're going to jump right to new business. First sort of new business, opening and closing of the May 2nd, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant and the May 4th, 2022 Special Town Meeting Warrants.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board open the annual Special Town Meeting Warrants starting tomorrow, which is January 12th, and closing the warrants on February 25th at 4:30 PM.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion or have a second? Okay, and we have Mr. Johnson wrote, so we're going to do a roll call vote this evening. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Ms. Wallman?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, and now this second one here, we have April 2, 2022 Local Election Ballot Moderator.
Mr. Chairman, are we setting, just for a point of clarification, is that for a special town meeting and then open town meetings, the same date?
So, thank you for doing that. So, the town meetings are scheduled, the annual town meeting is May 2nd and May 4th, and if the board would just call for a special town meeting on May 4th at 7:00 PM at the Tewksbury Memorial High School, that'd be great. And the warrants are open for both of those.
And the same dates for the warrant, the 12th and 25th?
Yep.
Okay, good catch. So, look at a form of a motion to open the May 4th, 2022 Special Town Meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, and do we need to include the start time in that?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Okay, have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Vote aye, Ms. Wallman?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the clarification. So, the next point here is April 2, 2020, the Local Election Ballot Moderator, believe this, our esteemed colleague actually went from moderator to the Select Board, so we still have an unexpired term of a year, so this is simply formality to put that in motion. Any questions from the board? It's a pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, it would be my pleasure to make a motion to place the unexpired term of town moderator on the annual town election ballot.
I have a second. I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Vote aye, Ms. Wallman?
Aye.
Okay. Next order of business, Mr. Montori, we have a gracious donation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received a donation from Lowell Five in the amount of $3,000 for first responders, and the money is going to the fire department, and the fire chief will use it for equipment or supplies for the ambulance. Lowell Five is donating funds to other communities within their area, and they contacted me a couple of weeks ago, and they told me they were donating the funds, and I thanked them, and the fire chief is going to set up an opportunity for them to come down and present the check formally and thank them in person.
Awesome, they're always very, very generous.
So, if the board could vote just to accept the donation.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I make a motion to accept the donation of Lowell Five in the amount of $3,000 for our first responders.
I have a motion and I have a second. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wallman?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. And it does need a motion, but Mr. Montori, would you draft a letter on behalf of the board thanking the Lowell Five for the generous donation? Thank you very much, okay? Good stuff. The next order of business is liquor license approvals for licenses. We have Crystals, again, they were transferring the Shell Food Mart, and the second order of business would be the Deli King, they're transferring the name of Mike's on Main, so just a formality since we're renewing the license for 2022. Any questions there from the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a question, are these, what licenses are they? They're not liquor, right? If they're liquor licenses, we have to deal with the different process.
I believe they were liquor licenses, Mr. Montori, keep me honest.
They are. So, a little background on this, these two licenses were approved under the, well, not approved, they were presented to us in the packet for the new names that they are going to. Those transfers have not been completed yet, so the two applicants have requested that their, the current owners of those licenses extend, as was the intent for the, what was presented at our last meeting that we approved. So, it's the, the old owners that are transferring, they're looking to extend so that transfer can continue.
Yeah, okay, so the current request is to renew the current holder for a period of time, right?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's what was confusing me, I didn't want to, we don't have a formal transfer request in front of us, so it confused me on the word transfer, so, all right, I got it, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Mackey. Did you have a, Ms. Wallman?
No.
Okay, very good. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll recommend that we approve the liquor license for Mike's on Main as presented.
I have a motion to, oh.
It would be Deli King, correct?
Yeah.
Deli King and Crystals, right?
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion to approve the continuance of the liquor licenses for Crystals and for Deli King pending their transfer, so it's already previously approved.
Thank you.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Good, Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wallman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Brings us to Town Manager, Mr. Montori, we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget presentation to go through. I've given the board copies of the presentation, I've also given the board copy of the FY23 recap and line item budget. The departmental budgets will be sent to the board and to the Finance Committee hopefully at the end of the week, and they'll be uploaded to the website either the end of the week or the beginning of next week. Those are the, all the detail behind what I'm presenting tonight. So, the FY23 budget presentation, this is similar to what I've presented in the past, providing details on the budget itself, the process itself. So, bear with me as I go through the presentation, and I'm probably going to review things that I've reviewed in the past. First slide just gives an outline of what's going to be presented tonight, we'll review the budget process, we're going to review revenues and expenditures. For expenditures, we're going to review the overall FY23 appropriation, which includes town and school budget, we're going to review other local expenditures, which are other items that need to be raised during the budget process, and then we're going to review state and county charges. We're also going to review revenues, which will help pay for our expenditures, reviewing the tax levy, state aid, local receipts, and other available funds. Then we'll go into more detail on the FY23 town and school budgets, we'll review a five year budget projection, we'll talk about future items to monitor, and then just a quick review of the board's selectmen's financial policies. In regard to the budget process, the budget process started back in November, early November, when the budget message was sent out to all the department heads, budgets were due November 19th, departments were told to work the guidelines to adjust salaries for contractual obligations, budgets were to be level service, which meant fund your budgets to provide the same level of service that you're providing in this current year, and then each department was to provide their top three priorities that they would like to see funded beyond the level service budget if funding became available. The budget review took place between November 23rd and November, December 9th, the budget itself was developed between December 10th and January 4th. Over the past week, we've been working on finalizing the presentation for the board tonight, making any other changes in the budget, meeting with board members to review the budget, and bringing us to tonight's presentation. In the next couple of weeks, the Finance Committee will begin their thorough review of each department's budget, beginning January 24th, the Finance Committee will meet on Mondays this year, and they'll continue that process for the next few months. So, first, I'm going to go through a summary of the revenues and expenditures that made up the budget and funded the budget. As I mentioned, I'm going to discuss the town and school budget overall, local expenditures, state and county charges, and then the revenues that will help pay for those items. So, for budget expenditures, the first line on this chart under projected budget FY23 is the fiscal '23 budget for the town and school. This year, the budget for the town and school is going to be $127,110,820, that's an increase over the previous year, the current fiscal year's budget by $2,943,027. There are no other items populated in this column, those will take place once we go to town meeting and have warrant articles and finish the enterprise budgets, as well as the, any financial warrant articles. Another area that we need to raise and appropriate, cherry sheet offsets, the $52,761 is level funded to FY22's level, this funding is state aid to public libraries. Next items are our other local expenditures, there are two items in this section, the first being the overlay reserve, $650,000 we're projecting to appropriate, this number will be finalized when we set the tax rate next year, and it's usually a formula and a function that the Department of Revenue has in the recap sheet, so this number will most likely change, but initially, when we go through the budget process, we start with 650, as you can see from the historic perspective, it's fluctuated anywhere from 760 this current year to 643 in FY21, so it does move up and down based on their formula. The second item on this chart is for teacher deferral, this is the payback of the teacher deferral that the town took advantage of, the amount we need to pay back is $86,678. This is the last year of the teacher deferral that we're raising funds for, and this year we will not receive any benefit of the teacher deferral, it's strictly the payback. Under expenditures, we continue with state and county charges, these are charges that we receive from the Commonwealth and Mass on our cherry sheets when they distribute local aid. These items are things like mosquito control projects, which is our assessment for the mosquito control that we utilize to spray areas of town where we have high mosquito areas, or when we have problems with mosquitoes, they come in and they will spray around Livingston Recreation Field, they'll even go to homeowners' houses if there's an area in their backyard that needs to be sprayed, so that's our assessment for mosquito control. Going down the line, just some other items, we have our Regional Transit Authority, $321,426 assessment, further down the line, our school choice tuition assessment of $402,263, and then our largest assessment, which is charter school assessment of $1,253,322. These are all projections at this point, it's a 10% increase over the previous year. Again, these charges and assessments do fluctuate, as you can see, the changes from actual '21 to projected '22, they increased substantially based on the state projected numbers that we were given, but in FY21, difference between FY20 and '21, there was actually a decrease. So, these, these will change every year, and they mostly change in the area of school choice and charter school assessment. So, this final slide brings the amount that we need to raise in FY23 to $130,4,992.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I have a question for the manager.
Please.
Through you. Looking at the school choice sending tuition is, it's remarkably up, statistically significant for FY22, and we anticipate for FY23, is that pandemic-driven?
My guess it was, but it's hard to say if, you know?
Sure.
If that was actually it, but my guess is we saw that because of the pandemic, and maybe there was a reason, whether it was, they didn't want to do virtual schooling, or they wanted...
Right, because that would include some of the Connections Academy, some of those schools that parents can choose for their students.
Correct, and the parent, which parents would choose where they wanted to send them. It could be because there was a, they wanted to go longer with virtual, more robust learning, virtually, it's hard to say what it was.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, turning our attention to revenues, the first area of revenue we're going to start is with the property tax, property taxes, and property taxes are made up of three areas. First is the property tax levy itself, which is the levy that we start with from the previous fiscal year. We add 2.5% to that levy, levy limit based on what we're allowed to by state statute. Then we have, then we add new growth, new growth is additional tax revenue generated by new construction, renovations, or other increases in the property tax base during the calendar year, and bringing those all together gives us the levy or levy limit that we will tax, projected to tax going into fiscal year '23, this is our largest area of revenue. This slide just gives you a snapshot of the, determining the proposition, 2.5 levy limit, as I mentioned, and these are just examples, you take the previous year's levy limit, which on this slide is $10 million, you add 2.5% to it, which is $250,000, you add new growth, which is again, tax revenue generated from new construction, renovations, or other increases to the tax base, and you come up with the new levy limit that you're allowed to spend within of $10,450,000. Now, in order to go over that levy limit, you need to either have a proposition 2.5 override, which increases that levy limit forever, or you could do a debt exclusion, which you would exclude debt service for as long as that debt exists, similar to what we've done with our building projects in town. There is one other override that communities can take advantage of, they're called capital outlay exclusions, which communities have done for a very short period of time to pay for equipment that they purchase, they may purchase a fire truck and pay a five-year note on that fire truck that they just do a capital outlay on for a very short period of time. So, then that will bring the new levy limit up when you add the 2.5%, the new growth, and now the debt exclusion of $1 million to $11,450,000, and that is what you're allowed to raise within proposition 2.5. In regard to new growth, this is a chart that I like to show, just to give you an idea of how new growth does fluctuate over the past 10 years. 10 years ago, 2013, our new growth was $867,000, our high was $2.4 million in 2018, and then in FY22, it was $1,633,217. As you can see from this, this chart, most of our growth has been driven by personal property, mostly from the utilities, but personal property has been the biggest driver of our, of our new growth. And also, as you can see from this chart, most of our growth is in the area of residential, we don't, we have not had much commercial or industrial growth in the past 10 years added to our tax base. So, this slide gives you an idea of what we'll be raising in the upcoming fiscal year in taxes, we will be taxing at the full levy limit of $103,385,526, that's an increase in the levy of $2,572,729. This slide is a slide that we put together as an estimate of what the impact to taxes will be next year based on this levy increase. This first slide just gives you a history of our levy limits, our tax shift in our values, as well as average tax bill in the community, with a column that shows the projection for what we believe the tax impact will be. This next slide just focuses strictly on FY23 and gives an idea of what the impact in taxes will be based on this increase in the levy. Now, if the shift stays at 1.59, and we increase the levy, as I mentioned, by $2,572,729, if values stay the same, and if the percentages within the tax levy for commercial, personal property, industrial, and residential all stay where they are, the average tax bill will increase $190. Now, that's based on everything staying the same. Now, there are a couple of things that will change. First, we'll probably have a town meeting in October and add money to the tax levy as we normally have done in the past few, past years, so that'll impact that $190, but mostly what's going to impact that number, as it has in the past, home values will most likely change. And next year, we're anticipating home values to go up anywhere from 6% to 10%. Now, we don't know that definitely, but we have a feeling based on home sales and what we're seeing for values, that we're going to see an increase in the average home value next year. But it's hard to determine how that will impact our taxes, the tax, average tax bill, because we also don't know what the percentage of commercial will go up, what the percentage of industrial will go up, and that all factors into developing the tax rate. What we also don't know is what the shift will be next year, because the board has been very good at determining what to shift on an annual basis, there's plenty of room between the 1.59 and the 1.75 maximum shift for the board to make adjustments next year. So, our estimate right now is that everything stays the same, it's 100, we know it's going to be a $190 increase, but things will change over the next year, as we've seen. Next couple of slides, I'll go through quickly, but it's something I like to go through, because we always talk, there's always been discussions of, you know, limiting tax increases and no tax increases, but in order to have no tax increase in a community, that means you're not raising the levy at all. And in order to do that for us, we'd have to not raise the levy, the $2.5 million I mentioned earlier, and if you don't raise that $2,572,729, that means you're going to have to reduce town and school budgets within the community. So, the FY recommended budget, as I mentioned earlier, was $127.1 million. Of that, school and town salaries make up $57.4 million. If we want no tax increase, and we don't raise the levy $2.5 million, as I mentioned earlier, you're going to have to reduce services and probably have layoffs within the community. Secondly, the town and school operating budgets, the Shaw Sheen Regional Vocational School Assessment, Essex Aggies Assessment, our capital outlay budgets and our unclassified budgets make up the remaining $71 million, $71.8 million of the recommended budget. Of that, $64.1 million really should not be cut, and I'll go into that in a little more detail, leaving $7.6 million throughout town and school budget, budget lines that could be available to reduce the $2.5 million, but doing that will obviously impact education, public safety, and the overall delivery of services. The next slide, and I won't go into this detail, but there's a list of item, list of line items here, that, going back to that $64.1 million of items I mentioned that should not be cut, would be difficult to reduce within the budget. Just going through a few of them, the snow and ice budget, very, it's already a low budget as it is, cutting that would, would, could really not happen. Our solid waste budget, which is our trash pickup and our trash disposal, $2.8 million. Just going through a few others, our debt service for non-exempt and exempt debt, $5.2 million, we need to pay those obligations. School, non-exempt and exempt debt, $6.6 million, we need to pay those obligations. Town and school utilities for all our buildings, $1.9 million. Our middle sex retirement for town and school, $9.2 million, we're required to pay that Our group health insurance, $12.7 million. So, these items, these line items, as they're detailed here, just give you an idea of some of the areas we really have no, a little flexibility in reducing or cutting, and what that shows is that when you get down to what can be looked at for reductions, it's not much left. So, this just gives you a good idea of what those items are when we're putting the budget The next item, again, just reviewing average tax bills, just gives you an idea of what the FY22 average tax, residential tax bill has been in other communities, what their average single-family home value is, this is 20 communities that we've used as comparisons in the past, and it just gives you an idea where we are compared to these other communities. The one thing I will say in reviewing in detail many of these communities, no one has higher debt exclusions than we do.
Can I ask a question on that? Is that because of our sewer, or is it just because of all of the projects?
It's all the projects combined.
Okay.
The next revenue is state aid. This is the, this is the revenue we receive from the Commonwealth for Chapter 70 school aid, for charter school assessment reimbursement, we never get reimbursed as much as we probably should for charter school, or as much as there was a commitment years ago, but we do receive a reimbursement, and as you can see, it fluctuates each year. Then there's unrestricted general fund aid, we get reimbursement for veterans' benefits, for exemptions for veterans, blind, and surviving spouses, for state-owned land, we receive funds in our public library offsets, which we raised in this, earlier in the presentation. Each year, I level fund the projection for state aid to what we're currently receiving from the Commonwealth. As I've shown the board in the past, this number will change throughout the process. Historically, the governor will come in when a higher number, legislature will play around with that number and, and change it, sometimes lower it, sometimes increasing it. The big fact, the big unknown is what they do with state and county assessments that offset any increases we have to local aid, but this number stays the same, as well as the projection for state and county charges until July, when we know exactly what the state is going to give, give the town for revenue, and what they are going to charge for county assessments and state assessments, and then we'll adjust the budget to address any unfunded priorities in October. But I'd rather be in a position of adding to the budget than cutting the budget. The next area of revenue is our local receipts, this is a chart that gives you an indication of the local receipts that... This is a chart that gives you an indication of the local receipts that we assess and collect locally. This year, the total amount that I'm projecting for local receipts is $9,169,825. That's an increase over the projected amount for FY '22 by $447,615. Now, going through local receipts in a little bit more detail, these slides that I'm going to go through just give you a breakdown of each of the local receipts that we collect, what, how, what they actually are, any state statute that is relevant to those, and what the assumption was in projecting those receipts. So for example, motor vehicle excise, this is a locally imposed tax assessed to owners of motor vehicles registered to an address under Mass. General Law 60A. The excise rate is $25 per $1,000 of vehicle value. The FY '23 projection is based on 90% of the actual amount collected in FY '21. And just to discuss the assumptions in a little bit more detail, each year when developing the budget, we look at all of the local receipts, we look at what was collected in the previous fiscal year, but what has been collected in the past five fiscal years. We develop a few scenarios, we develop three-year average, three-year average of actual collections, four-year average of actual collections, and five-year average of actual collections. We also do, we also do a projection in an assumption of 90% of the previous fiscal years actual collected. And the reason why we use 90%, that gives a 10% cushion in room in case there are any issues during the projected, the new coming, the upcoming fiscal year. We look at all of those scenarios, we look at the history of the receipts, we look if there's any unique issues in regard to those revenues, and then we finalize a revenue projection that I bring forward within the budget. So based on everything we looked at for motor vehicle excise, we're projecting 90% of the actual collected in FY '21. And we want to be cautious with motor vehicle excise because we're not sure what the outlook for purchasing new vehicles will be, especially when it's so difficult to get a vehicle. For hotel motel tax, the projection for FY '23 is based on 50% of FY '21's actual. And the reason for that is because we know one hotel is up for sale. We're not sure what is going to happen with that hotel. We also know a second hotel is working to convert to apartments. So we could potentially lose two of our four hotels in the community. So we want to just prepare for that now, just in case, and reduce the revenue by 50%. Meals tax, which is a tax locally on meals in the community that we're allowed to do based on a statute the town accepted, and we're projecting 90% of FY '21's actual. Other, other excise tax, which is a boat excise for those who house their boat at their residence. This is a minor tax that we just used a five-year average of this actual collection. Penalties and interests, these are charges assessed on payment of taxes and fees in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 59, Section 57. We took a three-year average of this revenue as our projection, which we felt was a reasonable approach. Payment lower taxes, this is from the Housing Authority for property they have within the community. These are based on agreements we have with the Housing Authority, and the projection is based on the actual agreements. Charges for services, this is our ambulance service. This is for fees that we charge using the Medicare allowable rate as a base. Tuxbury rate is 250% over the 2019 Medicare allowable rate. We have to use the 2019 rate because that's what we're required to use, and that gets adjusted every, I think, five years. We're projecting 90% of the FY '21 actual. As you can see, this has fluctuated greatly. The actual collected in FY '29 was less than what was collected in '20, but more than what we collected in '17, '18, and '19. This is also, as part of the collection for ambulance services, we receive Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement, Medicare reimbursement, and that fluctuates greatly on an annual basis. So we want to be careful on this revenue projection. Fees is, is a revenue we collect for department services such as police details. We have a 10% administrative fee on any police details. Other fees for sailor weights and measures, fire inspections, report records requests. We're projecting 90% of the FY '20 revenue that was collected, FY '21 revenue that was Rentals, this is for rental of town land for wireless carriers. This is mainly for areas such as the South Station pole that is next to the South Station, the lease of our space on our water tanks for carriers. This is based on 90% of FY '21's actual. The, this area is somewhat, something we're going to need to keep an eye on because some of the leases will be coming up and the rentals are far less than what we've seen in the past. Also, it's a tough one to really nail down as a projection because of the timing of the payments. Some of the carriers pay quarterly, monthly, others wait a few months and pay us later. Just, they come in at such different times, it could hit a fiscal year at a different time. So we try, we try to be careful in this area.
Mr. Montori, just on this, I know this is a draft, and we went through a lot of this, and we're going to do deeper dive. So it may change, it may not change. But for this one here, I definitely would, I want to do a deeper dive here. Sometimes you read about lucrative contracts for VFWs, Knights of Columbus, and churches and whatnot, you know. I just think this projected 400K even for that tower in South, South Tuxbury, it's just, looks like a very small number compared to what you read about. So to your point, contracts are coming up. So I'd like to take a deeper dive on here and see what, what do the current contracts look like and how can we potentially get more from some of these carriers? Just looks like a very small number.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. I don't know what I did here. The next area, other departmental revenues, we don't have a projection for that. We haven't had any collections in that classification in the past few years. Licensing permits, these are our liquor licenses, our building electrical plumbing and gas permits, our DPW permits, border health food establishments, all a part of this revenue. The projection for FY '23 is based on 90% of the FY '21 actual, but I did not take 90% of the FY '21 actual until we reduced the actual collection by $278,375. That was a unique building permit that we received this past year for the Home Depot construction. We're not going to see a building permit like that again, so I reduced that first, then took 90% of the revenue. Fines and forfeitures, these are our court fines, parking fines. I need to take library, we do not have library fines anymore, so I need to cross that out.
Yeah.
And just on the licensing permit fees, I mean, I get the fact that projects covered it out, that's going to impact the, the license and permits that the revenues we have. But, you know, year over year, it looks like it's going down, yet our budget increases. So, you know, maybe it's time to look at some of our license and permits to see if there is a potential increase to coincide with the budget increase to offset some of the potential, you know, our tax levy.
I think that'd be a great idea. We're actually looking at the building permit fees as we speak, and we're looking at other areas than a non-general fund, but like water and, water fees that we charge for connections, things like that.
Okay. So that will, is there any potential that we'll go on this particular budget here? Or is that kind of a future-looking FY '23 budget?
You probably should look at it over the next, since we already did liquor license and things like that, the next time you do it would be.
A year.
In next December. But I would, I think once we get past this process, we should start looking at it because you never know when there's a transfer, a new application, things like that.
Right. Taxes go up and sometimes license and permits fees can go up too to offset some of the, some of the budget increases. Okay, thank you.
I have one other question on that. What about Ames, the project on Ames, is that, does that figure into this as well in terms of billing?
No, because we just don't know when that permit's going to come in.
Okay.
And if it does.
I just want to be clear because we're not sure.
We're not sure.
And that's important for people to know that it's not in this budget, but it's not, it could turn out to be free cash later because it could impact this year after the fact. And then people think we're being non-transparent about that.
Right. And we try to project our revenues with revenues that we know are going to come in consistently. You know, we knew Home Depot was coming in, but we didn't project that revenue into our license and permits because you'd have a big spike and then a big drop, and you just don't know what it's going to be. So even with Ames Pond, as Selectman Stronach said, they would just float to free cash when that comes in.
I just wanted to call that out.
So fines and forfeitures, we took 90% of FY '21 actual for this one also, based on its history. Next revenue, interest earnings. This is interest earned on cash that the treasurer, town treasurer has in the general fund. We're projecting 90% of FY '21's actual for this, but as you can see, this fluctuates great, fluctuates greatly on an annual basis. I want to call out at the actual in FY '20, that was a high amount that we received in interest earnings that year because we had the elementary school bond and the fire station bond on hand that allowed us to collect extra interest in that particular year.
In FY '20?
In FY '20.
Okay.
Mr. Laney, state revenue and other revenue, we don't have any projections. Medicaid reimbursement, this is revenue from the federal government for providing medically necessary Medicaid services to eligible mass health enrolled children. This fluctuates greatly, as you can see, in FY '17 and '18, we were over $300,000. FY '20, we were $98,000. FY '21, $197. Because we never know what the federal government's going to do, the, the funding is based on FY '20 actual, which was the lowest we received in the last five years. Recurring revenue, these are areas because they are, because it's a revenue that we can't count on every year. We don't project any revenue in this category, same for non-recurring revenue. The recurring revenue are.
Richard, can you just advance a slide?
Oh, sorry. So recurring revenue in the past has been things like tax title, deferred real estate, municipal liens, things like that, used to be in this revenue. Medicaid drug subsidy used to be in this revenue. So it's, it's, it just catches revenue that doesn't fit into any other categories, but we can't count on it every year. The non-recurring revenue is grants such as grant reimbursements from FEMA or MEMR, any special Medicaid reimbursements that we receive throughout the year go into this account. In the past, supplemental tax revenue has gone into this category. So it just, again, it's not a revenue we can predict or count on, so we do not project So those are the local receipts, portion of the revenue. In regard to the remaining revenue that we normally count on, we used to count on the teacher deferral as an offset. Again, there is no longer a teacher deferral offset in FY '23. The remaining items that you see in the previous fiscal years will get populated once we finalize enterprise fund budgets as well as town meeting warrant articles. So just to give you an idea, these are two graphs that show you the breakdown of our revenue for FY '22 and FY '23. And as you can see, property taxes make up over 79% of our revenue. Other available funds in the past, less than 1%. Local receipts in FY '22, 6.9%, and FY '23, we're projecting 7.1%. And state aid makes up 13.4% of our revenue. This last slide is just a summary of the information I presented, the appropriations and the sources of funding to balance our budget. And when you look back on the previous fiscal years under projected FY '22, the surplus that's projected there were from enterprise funds in the previous years. And prior to that, the previous years, FY '17 through 2021, all of those surpluses went into generating free cash or retained earnings. Am I going too fast?
Nope.
So going deeper into the FY '23 budget, we want to start with what the new revenue that we generated based on our increase in the tax levy within Proposition 2 and 1/2 plus new growth. In addition to that, the increase that I mentioned in our local receipts generated a new revenue of $3,460,603, which is what we use to pay for the town and school budget and other items that are within the budget. To start with, the first thing we do is to reduce, we reduce the $3.4 million by $210,819. This was money that was put into the town non-exempt principal and interest budget, debt service budget to pay for the DPW school maintenance facility, which I'll talk a little bit more as we get into the budget. Then we reduced that $3.4 million, but what, by what we're projecting for a Shawshine Tech Assessment, we're projecting a 6% increase at this time. That's $410,582. Over the next few weeks, I'm sure I'll be invited to a meeting at Shawshine Tech to review their budget and what their assessment's going to be. Hopefully, it's under this amount, and if it is, then we'll reallocate funds to department budgets to address priorities. If it's not, and we need to address further, to add further funds to this, both the town and school will have to adjust their budgets to address any increases to stay within that $3.4 million new revenue. Essex Aggies Assessment, we're projecting a decrease next year, so we get to add back $9,317 to our revenue, bringing our subtotal of revenue to $2,848,519. That's the revenue that gets split between the town and the school. The school's additional revenue based on that amount will be $1,579,582 for their operating budget, which would include salaries, operating, and capital outlay, but also to pay for their fixed costs. From that $1.5 million, we deducted $86,685 to pay for an increase in health insurance. We're projecting a 5% premium increase to health insurance in FY '23 as well as a 5% medics increase. We're not projecting a dental increase premium in FY '23. We try to set funds aside for retirements that might occur in the town and in the school because when someone retires and we fill that vacancy, the retiree still carries health insurance, so we need to plan for the new person coming onboard to take health insurance. So we want to be prepared. School retirement is projected to increase 6.66% on the amount of $107,675. Medicare tax increase, $12,106,000. And one of the bigger, the big increase on the school side for fixed costs is under property and liability insurance. We're projecting a 10% premium increase in FY '23 based on what our insurance carrier is telling us. But we're also need to project the premium increase, increasing for the new elementary school insurance. So based on discussions we've had with our insurance carrier, the projection for next year for the school side is $157,891. On the town side, we're projecting gross revenue of $1,268,937. Going through is down a similar list that the school has. For health insurance, our projection is increasing $61,471. That gets reduced. $503,043 for our retirement increase, again, 6.66%. Medicare tax increase of $6,657. Our non-exempt debt for the town, this is not including the new DPW facility and schools, our normal debt is decreasing, so we get to add back in $20,450. In the town's property and liability insurance is increasing 10% also. But we're also adding in the new fire station premium next year, because that will be coming onboard. So our increase for property and liability insurance is $92,451. Now, after all of those reductions from the gross revenue, the school has $1,215,225 to add to their salaries and operating budget and capital outlay. And the town has $625,765. This next slide gives you a summary of the overall budget, again, which is the $127.1 million. It's increasing $2,943,027 overall. Then it breaks down the town budget itself, which is $44,1,405 without exempt debt. Exempt debt for the town next year is $4,921,494. The school budget without exempt debt for FY23 is $64,197,438. In school exempt debt next year is $6,603,450. And then we break down the Shawshene Tech budget, which is a little over $7.2 million, and Essex Aggie's budget, which is $133,414. So this gives you a snapshot summary of the budget areas. This next slide, and this slides, the next few pages, and I won't go into detail, this gives you a breakdown of every budget in the town and what we're, what I'm recommending, what was requested by the department head, what was budgeted in FY22, expended in '21, expended in '20, and expended in 2019. There's also a column on the far right that shows you the budget, the budget increase, decrease for that particular budget. So this is every budget in the, within the town and school budget. It covers the next three pages.
And Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Montori. This is also the same listing that you see in Town Meeting. It's pretty close.
It's close, yes.
It's pretty close. So folks that are familiar with going to Town Meeting, this is where, sort of the genesis of that document.
And when the budget is online, there'll be two summary budgets. One, a very detailed line item budget of all the, all the department budgets with their line items that are within their budget, but also a summary budget that is actually voted on at Town Meeting.
Thank you.
So this slide is a chart, gives you two charts, pie charts for FY22 and FY23, just breaking down each of the categories I mentioned. As you can see, the school budget makes up a little bit over 50% of the budget, overall town, school budget. Exempt debt makes up 5.6. Shawshene Tech, 5.5. Essex Aggie, about 11%. And then, actually, 0.1%. And then the town budget is 34 point, a little over 34%. And then the town's exempt debt is 4% of the budget. But if you add up the town and school budget together, we're looking at 9.6% of the budget is exempt debt. This next slide shows a breakdown of the town. Hold on, I think I skipped a slide. Hold on. This gives you, this is a breakdown of the salaries and operating of the town and school budgets, and how much is made up of salaries of the budget, and how much is made up of operating health insurance and retirement. As you can see, salaries are the biggest part of the budget, but if you add retirement and health insurance together, we're talking close to, you know, 25% of the budget is fixed in retirement and health insurance costs, 10%, 10.1 for exempt debt. And this again is for town and school. So focusing on the town budget itself, this slide gives you an idea of the categories that Slakman-Wellman mentioned earlier that you vote on at Town Meeting. You know, general government, finance department, community services, council on aging, public safety, DPW exempt debt. The town budget is increasing, including exempt debt and net of allocations, which are funds, the enterprise, which have, which have funds transferred from the enterprise fund to offset costs within certain budgets. The increase is $1,418. And that increase includes the $210,819 in non-exempt debt service for the DPW school maintenance facility. Going a little further, this is another chart that shows you, I think I, did I go backwards? This is for town departments, breaking down the percentage each department makes up of the overall town budget. Police, 17% of the budget, fire, 13%. DPW, 12% of the budget. Our unclassified budget, which is mostly fixed costs, make up 13% of the budget. Exempt debt, 10% of the budget. This next slide just goes into increases within the town budget. This, if you take out the exempt debt, because exempt debt went down, in net of our allocations, the town budget actually went up $4 million, $1.4 million, $1,479,758 of that. Salaries increased, $714,093. Within that salary increase, that includes the cost of living increase for employees in FY23, which was 2.25%. It has increases for any other contractual obligations such as longevity changes and adjustments for people's step increases. There are no new hires in the budget. We're just filling any vacancies that have occurred within the budget. Sickly buyback within the FY23 budget is $221,108. That's within that $714,000 increase. The fire department has a sickly buyback of $69,479. And DPW has one, has a sickly buybacks for three employees totaling $151,619. Elections has a salary increase of $64,600. As you'll see, within the budget items, elections overall will increase a little over $100,000 in FY23. And that's based on what we believe the cost of the elections is going to be next year. The town clerk has spent a great deal of time trying to determine the cost of elections next year based on what we spent over the previous year due to a previous couple of years, based on mail-in ballots, extended time for early voting, the need for additional staff to help with mail-in ballots, early voting, and any other requirements that may come about. Again, we don't know if the budget being presented for elections will be enough. We hope it will be. We won't know until we get past the election, main election season next year. We may need to add to it in the fall based on how things are trending. Once we start the fiscal year, once we know more about any election laws that get passed. But it's clear that as we move forward with elections in the future, we need to make sure that we fund them properly to give the town clerk and our staff all the tools needed to conduct proper elections as they've done exceptionally in the last, you know, 10 years, 11 years that I've been here. So that's an, that's an area that's increased and we'll have to watch in the future. This next slide is a breakdown of the increases or changes to the operating budget side of the budget. Operating budgets actually overall decreased $22,577. But there, there are some areas that I've highlighted on the, on this page that did increase. Just going through some of them quickly. General government budgets increased. Operating budgets increased $46,636, mainly in the area of the town manager professional budget for animal control services, $20,256. Elections increased in the area of postage for mail-in ballots, $20,000. And election professional services, $8,300. The other budgets that had large increases, town facilities, $25,815 increased for repairs to, because we increased repairs for maintenance, maintenance buildings in the amount of $15,750. And leases and contracts for the grass cutting contract increased $6,165. The other area that budget that increased was police, $61,957 for a variety of areas within the operating budget, operating expenses for areas such as maintenance agreements and annual contracts within the leases and contracts budget. Communications increased for radios and maintaining phones and radio system. Increase in computers for replacement of computers and other supplies, all other supplies within the department budget for an increased cost of ammunition. The fire department budget increased $5,339 for areas such as utilities for the new station. Professional services within the department increased. Office supplies and ambulance supplies also increased. DPW had an increase of $82,863 within its line items, mainly in highway leases and contracts for line painting, which is increasing next year. The other big increase within the overall DPW budgets were in fleet maintenance increased, and that was mainly because we're projecting an increase in the cost of fuel next year, based on what we're seeing. Streetlights decreased $400,483. The reason for that, we paid off short-term borrowing for the conversion of the streetlights to LED. And LED streetlights are costing less to operate than the older streetlights that we had. Solid waste collection disposal has increased $134,575. That includes a 3% increase for our contract with Republic Services. And our disposal increase on a part-time basis has increased from $90 to $93.60 to dispose of our solid waste at Covanta. The next area of the budget, our unclassifieds increased. I think that number's wrong. I think that number's wrong. I mentioned these increases earlier. For health insurance, we saw an increase of $86,000. We're increasing debt service to $210,819 for the DPW school maintenance facility. Retirement increased $503,043. Liability insurance, the $92,000 of Medicare tax, $6,650. So the total increase in our unclassified budget was $788,532. Just briefly, on the non-exempt debt for the DPW, I just want to touch upon that a little bit. We'll talk about this in more detail over the next few months. The amount of funding that's in the non-exempt debt budget by adding this $210,000 will allow the town to borrow $25 million for a new DPW slash school maintenance facility. The, right now, the engineering and design team is going back and making changes to, to the design to reduce the scope of the project, the cost of the project, to bring it in close to the $25 million. It may fluctuate a million, a few million dollars one way or the other, depending on the final costs. But the goal is to bring this project in around $25 million or close to it. The plan is to build what originally was Phase 1 of the project, which included a garage to store most of the department's vehicles, to build a new mechanics bay and maintenance facility, and to build a wash bay to wash not just DPW vehicles, but school, fire, and police vehicles and any other town vehicles. Originally, we looked to build, to tear down the existing building and build an entirely new facility for offices, workshop, storage and vehicle storage areas. Also to build an area of locker rooms and break room area for the staff. But after reviewing it in more detail and trying to bring the cost down, the plan right now would be to keep the two wings of the existing building for workshops and storage, to renovate one of the bays, the area of, one or two of the bays for the school maintenance facility, and to build and or renovate new office areas for staff as well as a break room and a, and a locker room area for the staff. By doing that, we, we hope to bring the cost substantially lower than what's being projected. And the plan is to bring the project forward in October. Now, to bring the project forward in October, we're going to need to ask Town Meeting to authorize the borrowing of the funds. And if we borrow funds, we need to have the debt service payments within the budget. That's why we're budgeting it now and setting the money aside now. This current fiscal year, we did set aside funds for debt service for the project, anticipating that we were going, going to bid the project in January, February, March timeframe, and that we'd have a debt service cost in this fiscal year. But because the project's delayed, those funds will flow to free cash when we close out the books on June 30th.
Mr. Montori, have we done this in the past for other debt services such as an elementary school? Have we done this in the past where essentially we're buffering the budget, allocating dollars in the budget in preparation of a new building?
We have done it for, so for instance, in the enterprise fund budgets, we will budget debt service for water distribution projects. And then in anticipation of going to Town Meeting and asking for the authorization to borrow for those projects. For buildings, because this is the first time we've undertaken a building project without doing a debt exclusion, we are funding the money ahead of time of the, prior to the bond authorization. In the past, because we've done debt exclusions, we've had to get the vote at the election first, then the Town Meeting vote. Then we borrow the funds, understand what the debt impact is, and then Town Meeting has authorized the funds. But because this is different for us, since I've been here, we've never undertaken a project of this size within the tax levy. we've never undertaken a project of this size within the tax levy. I want to stress, this is not a debt exclusion. We're not increasing taxes specifically for this project. We are funding this within the proposition to an tax levy. But because it's a little bit different for us, you know, we need to fund the debt service, bring the project forward to the town meeting, and then have it voted on.
Okay, I think, I mean, we still have to vet this through. I mean, this is, you know, we saw the project, one, 40, whatever it was, 40 million. We still, so I'd like to see still more options and more thought process than just putting a number out there of 25 million.
We have a long way to go. We, you know, just some history on this. The DPW in the administration went forward with the project to build a new DPW facility after a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen at that time said, "We don't want to just put a Band-Aid on this. We want you to go forward and bring forward a project for an entire renovation." That's what we did. When we originally brought the cost forward for this project, we were in the price range of $28 million. Then COVID hit. The per square foot cost of all facilities went through the roof. The other thing that happened, the Department of Environmental Protection said, "We have a stump dump on the property that needs to be addressed." That could be $2 million that could add it to the project. So from the time that the Board of Selectmen said, "Do this project full," we went to town meeting, got approval for $2.2 million to do the design. Town meeting supported that appropriation. Even prior to that $2.2 million, at previous town meetings over the last 10 years, funds were approved to undertake studies in design for renovations to the building. We brought forward an $11 million debt exclusion some years back. Unfortunately, that did not pass. So this project has, is not new, the idea of renovating the DPW. Town meeting has supported funding in the past to undertake the studies and the design needed to understand what needs to be done at the DPW facility. The other thing that's changed in this project from when we first started it years back, the schools now are part of the project. The school, the school maintenance facility needs a home. They have no home right now. The new elementary school took that home away. They're renting space in town off of Washington Street. We hope to move them into the fire station temporarily. But we need to do something for the schools, and that added square footage and cost to this project. So, you know, initially, we felt good about the budget. COVID changed that on us. Prices have not come down. Supply chain has not changed, which has impacted costs. But, you know, the board members have all given input, spent time on what needs to be done to bring costs within a reasonable budget. We've worked to set funds aside within this budget and now next year's budget to bond a substantial amount of money that we've never done within the levy since I've been here, which I think we all should be happy with. And frankly, we're proud of it from the administration's standpoint because we're not asking for that debt exclusion. And we still have a ways to go to vet the project. And the Board of Selectmen still need to review the final product. You know, obviously, it will go in front of the planning board for whatever approvals are needed there. Finance committee is going to review it. And town meeting will have the ultimate decision in October to authorize the debt or to use any existing funds to help reduce the cost, to help pay for the cost. So we just haven't budgeted funds and have moved forward with the project, you know, to build the project. We're just setting the money aside for debt service that we anticipate. And if it fails, then the money will just get turned back.
Again, we, again, I talked, we know that there's a need there. There's a need there, you know, I don't want to get in that debate, but you know, there's a substantial cost. So we might not be voting on a debt exclusion, but we will be voting on a bond.
Absolutely.
Either way, it's going to be funded, okay, okay. And again, just a lot of more work. I don't want residents to be watching this and all of a sudden we have, you know, this idea. We still have a lot of vetting to do, but this is planning and strategizing. But nothing's formalized or official in any way, shape, or form.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just want to reiterate, a lot of vetting's already gone on, right? So DPW has been working on design for quite some time. Each board member has provided their thoughts, their input to the, to the design, to the approach. So, you know, there's still more to do. I'm hoping over the next three months, we start to see information coming out of the design team of new approaches. We'll bring it back in front of the Board of Selectmen for a few meetings to review again. But we have, we have a long way to go, and that's why we pushed it to October because we don't want to rush this. We want to do it, make sure everyone's comfortable with what we're doing.
Yeah, very good.
So, sorry for that sidetrack.
No, that's really good conversation.
You can blame me.
No, no.
Please.
Your, your reserve for your non-exempt debt service is $210,000. How long a note are you planning to take?
So we've actually, we're adding $210,000 to our non-exempt debt.
I beg your pardon?
The actual amount that we have set aside, if you can give me a second, for the debt service is probably closer to $1,008,000 in debt service for the DPW facility. We also have funding that will be set aside, about $124,000 in the water and $124,000 in the sewer to help pay for their portion of it. But the note would be for 20 years. Based on a $25 million bond issued, the highest debt, debt service principal and interest would be $2,49,075. And that's what we have allocated both within the general fund budget. And as I mentioned, water and sewer each have about $124,000 for debt service. But a bulk of it is in the general fund.
And there's still some dollars left over from the design too? Do we spend the whole 2.2 million?
We have not spent the whole 2.2, so that'll be factored in when we do the overall cost. Anything else on the DPW? Couple of other things on this slide. Capital outlay budgets decreased $290 because our facilities had a piece of equipment they purchased in FY '22 that they will not need funding in FY '23. That amount was $35,000. But there was an increase in the police department's capital outlay of $26,510 for an additional cruiser. So instead of four vehicles on an annual basis, the police department will be buying five. Under elections, we have $8,900 to purchase one additional vote tabulator for precinct, the split precinct five, and one additional pole pad with printer. And then finally, allocations that help offset costs within budgets increased $111,690. Water allocations increased $78,599. Sewer, $31,301. And cable, $1,790. The increase was mainly in the area of retirement assessment and property and casualty property and liability insurance. This next slide gives you an idea of some of the priorities not funded. Some of them you've seen before, and there are items that we just haven't gotten a chance to address. The priority in this year's budget was funding the debt service for the new DPW facility. But some of the unfunded priorities that we'll go back and look at if funding becomes available would be additional staffing and operating funds for the DPW to maintain roads, sidewalks, trees, and drainage. Additional staffing and operating funds for facilities and grounds specifically to maintain existing buildings. Additional staffing in the police department to add staffing to our, to our shifts. Even though we've added staff over the previous years in the police department, most of them have been in specialty areas. From a patrol unit standpoint, we have not had any new patrol staffing added since I've been here. Additional overtime for police department to properly cover shifts. Additional training for the police department as training requirements and needs increase. Additional staffing for the fire department to run a third ambulance more often. Additional overtime in the fire department, again, to cover shifts and run a third ambulance more often. Additional training in the fire department as requirements for training in the fire department increase and the need for training increases. And when it comes to both police, fire, and DPW, we are going to start seeing an increased need for training as, you know, as times become more, the jobs become more complicated and more complex, training is going to be needed. We'd like to see additional funding on the council on aging to fund van drivers within the budget so they don't impact grants that they currently do. Additional funding for a part-time transportation coordinator to help schedule and oversee transportation because we do have a high volume of transportation within the council, within the senior center. We want to review positions within the town to ensure salaries are competitive, to keep and attract talented employees. That's something we need to constantly do and look at if funding becomes available. On the school side, we always want to look at additional staffing and operating funding within the school department. And then finally, we want to ensure that we're funding town and school capital projects to purchase vehicles and equipment, maintain facilities, and undertake any projects.
For these, Mr. Montori, could you, not to get really like down to each lineup, but could you potentially provide a cost for each of these? Like a lineup cost for each of these, like put a dollar on it?
Yeah, we could try to do that.
And then we look in the budget and see if there's any wiggle room. You know, I mean, I could just see folks saying if we're gonna, again, I'm just thinking out loud sometimes like how a resident would think, that if we build a new building, I know we're showing on DPW staff, we've been shown on staff. So, you know, the cop before the horse. So I'd just like to see numbers around it, just, you know, staffing for police and overtime. And that's whatever seems like a, you know, a priority. So just like to see some, some numbers around those.
Yeah, we'll try to put some numbers on them.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Just briefly on the school budget. School budget without exempt debt is increasing $1,334,217. Of that increase, salaries are increasing $1,074,482 paying for any cost of living, living increase, longevity, step increases, and contractual obligations. I mentioned in the slide that there's no new positions being added, but I did speak to the business manager and they're going to have one additional new position at the Dewing School, an elementary school position. So there will be one added position. But that's all. Operating is increasing $140,743. There's no change to their capital outlay. And as I mentioned previously, fixed costs such as health insurance, retirement, property liability insurance, and Medicare tax are all increasing totaling $364,357. Now, the schools over the next few weeks, couple of months, will be holding workshops on their budget. And they'll have a public hearing on their budget probably sometime early March. Shawshank Tech budget's increasing $410,000, as I mentioned, and Essex Ag is decreasing. This next slide gives you a good indication of the breakdown of the school budget. 52% of the budget's made up of salaries. A little over 10% is exempt debt. 21.2% is made up of operating budget. Health insurance is 11.5%. So that concludes both the town and school budget overviews. This next slide, we always, I always put together, and it's again, just a projection, looking out five years, what a five-year budget projection would be for the town based on a variety assumptions. And based on this five-year projection, the town is in decent shape, showing surpluses in '24 through '28. Not big surpluses, but surpluses which indicate that, at least at this point, without any major financial issues happening, that we should be able to fund our budgets within the revenues that we're projecting. Which ultimately means we're not going to need an operating override within the town. So that's always good news. The next, just some items we want to keep an eye on as we move into the future. First is, you know, we want to really focus and keep an eye on employee recruitment. I think it's safe to say that finding people to fill key positions in the community are going to get more difficult as we move, move on. There are less, there are less and less people interested in some of the positions, key positions that we have, whether there are finance departments, whether there are more skilled departments. We even find, we're finding it difficult, difficulty even filling some of the middle, mid-management jobs as well as police, fire, and DPW jobs. Jobs that used to have many more applicants, we're seeing less applicants. So we just need to make sure we're keeping an eye on recruitment and attracting people to come and work in the community. Obviously, state aid and state and county charges is something we always want to keep an eye on because it's out of our control, as well as the federal budget and federal budget requirements that may come down the road. Any federal requirements that will be imposed upon us that could be costly. Solid waste and recycling costs in the future, we need to keep an eye on. I believe it's going to get more costly when we renew or extend the solid waste contract with a solid waste provider as well as disposal costs in the future. Sudden remediation costs, we need to keep an eye on. They jumped up this year higher than we anticipated. So we just want to make sure that the maintenance costs of that is watched. It's nothing that we need to worry about at the moment, but it's just something we need to keep on our radar as EPA requires more thing, more, more of the group maintaining the closed landfill. Shawshank tech assessment, again, somewhat out of our control. So we need to make sure that budget stays reasonable and our assessments stay reasonable. Unfunded liabilities such as retirement assessments, again, they're out of our control and we need to make sure that they, they stay reasonable for the town to fund our OPEB liability. We currently fund $650,000 for that liability. It's much less than we should be funding. Hopefully, in future years, we can add more to that. But that's a liability between both the retirement and OPEB liability. Each year, somewhere around $80 million of unfunded liabilities. We need to watch the stabilization fund. We need to continue to replenish that balance as we use it. Right now, we have $11.2 million in that fund, which is 9.1% of the total FY '22 budget. The goal is to have five, between 5% and 10% of that budget, percent of the total town budget. Based on FY '23, the fund balance is 8.89%, which is stronger than it has been in the past. But we know this year, we're going to take money out of the stabilization fund for some capital needs, one being a new fire truck that we'll need that's being brought forward by the fire chief. Other areas, town and school capital improvements. Vehicles, roads, sidewalks, drainage, buildings, and technology are all important areas we need to ensure we have funding for. And then obviously, we want to see our bond rating increase from AA+ to AAA. That's always been a goal of ours. We haven't been able to get there. I'm not sure. It's something we will be able to do, but it's a goal we've been striving for. And the last slide is just the Selectmen's financial policy that was adopted some years back that we use in guiding our financial, when we develop our budget, when we utilize our reserves, when we utilize free cash. So this just gives a snapshot of what those main portions of the policy are that help guide our, the setting of our budget, the projecting of our revenues as we move forward into a new fiscal year and as we operate in the current fiscal year. And that's it.
Well done, as usual. Questions? I have just a few comments. I mean, very good. Have questions from the board, comments from the board?
Really quickly, regarding your point on recruitment. When was the last time we did a pay-in-class study?
It's probably been 2015, 16, so it's something we want to look at again.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought, if I remembered correctly. No, thank you. That's a very comprehensive, it's a detailed budget presentation. It's an excellent document that you can follow. Will you be putting this presentation on the website?
Yes, the presentation, I just saw some things that need to be. The presentation, I just saw some things that need to be cleaned up and edited that will, I'll take care of tomorrow, we'll get this on the website. The entire budget, all department budgets, all budget information that departments have submitted will go on the website. We're a little short-staffed right now because of COVID, so once I get fully staffed, we'll get everything up and running on the website by the end of the week, beginning of next week. But this particular presentation will go up tomorrow.
Great, thank you so much.
Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I just have two comments, actually three, I'm going to save that. So first of all, it is incredible to me that this presentation gets better every single year that I've seen it. I've been doing these for quite some time now. I truly appreciate determining the tax levy slide and the example that you gave. I think that's really good for our residents to understand how that comes about, as well as the slide where you talk about what the potential budget increase is. I know that you have 2.6, but at the end of the day, I do, don't want, you alluded to this, don't hold us to that, it'll probably be a little bit higher than that, and I like the forecast of that. The priorities of not yet funded also always is a key priority that I like to look at. I do want to say that when we're looking at those priorities, that's outside of what could be coming forward in the October town meeting for free cash expenditures, which are not positions. This was a lot of positions in there this year, and I just wanted to note that. And then lastly, I would just like to make a comment on the DPW project. I am incredibly proud of the fact that we are looking at funding a project of this magnitude within our budget, in our tax levy. I am thinking that this is a project that we cannot wait to do, and the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. So I applaud everyone's efforts in getting that done. I also really appreciate the adjustments that are being made when we saw it come in higher than we anticipated to revamp the project instead of just saying, okay, let's go back to the town and ask them to fund this $15 million more than what we had anticipated. And lastly, I would just like to say, when we talk about renovations, I do want to be careful. I know that you're in the design phase, but I do think that we need to be very careful because even though sometimes a renovation seems to be an approach that is going to be more cost-effective, it sometimes is not because of unforeseen things that are in the building that may be very costly and bringing buildings up to code once you start that renovation. So I just ask that you and your team make sure that when we're thinking about renovation, that it is cost-effective. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for this detailed presentation. I look forward to meeting with you to dig into the deeper parts of the budget that you supplied to us. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to continue on what Stronach just said. So I think it's a big success, and it's very exciting that we're getting away from debt exemptions. I think when we had that initial discussion and 40 million was brought up, it was a pretty clear consensus among the board that a debt exemption wasn't in the cards. Planning, looking forward, finding ways to service that debt within the budget is huge, and I think is a big first step to lowering our overall tax bill. Because one of the parts that is not really addressed is tax rates don't increase that much. A large portion of our tax bill is from those debt exemptions. As those start to fall off, that tax bill will come down, and this is kind of a first step in riding that ship and making sure we don't continue down that path. So great presentation, lots of good information, and well done. Thank you.
How about Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And my colleagues that just preceded me, I think hit the nail on the head from my vantage point, certainly from, with respect to the overall budget. I know this is solid work. This is the second time I've gone through this presentation and discussion. I had the chance last week to meet with the town manager one-on-one and to review this in great detail and ask a lot of questions. So as I heard his presentation again this evening, it just reinforces the depth of work and the full transparency that exists around the process. And I want to, again, you know, echo what Mrs. Stronach stated, that that's, shouldn't be taken for granted. We lived in a time when that was not the case, and we're in a much better place for that. Relative to the DPW, I think the comments made and offered already are right on point. So I have two comments around that. The first is, the method that the town manager just described to fund that project, or potentially fund that project, is exactly what residents have asked us to try to do. We have, I think, a condition in Tuxbury, and it was out of necessity to use debt exclusions to fund our capital projects, and we've become conditioned to that. My fear is that the community is going to rush to judgment and assume that this is another one in that long line of debt exclusions. And I ask and plead and urge people who are paying attention to this presentation to step back and think about this. You just heard it explained that this is the first time in certainly 10 or 11 years that we've been able to do this, and I would venture that it's even longer. The opportunity...
We lost him.
I think we lost him.
He had some really good wisdom.
It looks like I may have been cut off. Can you still hear me?
No.
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to urge people to take a step back and don't rush to judgment. We're not trying to make this happen overnight. There will be ample time to discuss it. It still needs to be refined and vetted. But the sticker shock or the knee-jerk reaction that people have, because we've been conditioned to think in these terms, is that this is a debt exclusion and my taxes are going to go up significantly. That is not the case here. This is a different approach to financing a needed project. And I don't believe, because of the history of support for all the schools we've built, and the fire stations we've built, and the libraries we've built, and the senior center that we've built, this community does not want to settle for substandard resources. The evidence is there that our town supports this stuff. It is a quality of life issue, and supporting our DPW and the ability to deliver services is part of that equation. So that the town, I believe, has told us, we don't like raising taxes, we don't like doing debt exclusions, but if we have to, we will. And what the lesson learned here is that we can do this building without doing a debt exclusion. Huge, huge opportunity. So just take a minute, take a step back, and think about it a little differently before we rush to judgment, is the ask that I have tonight. And I look forward to more discussion about it as we go. Overall, terrific budget presentation and a solid budget. We're very fortunate to be able to provide our residents, and thanks to them for their contributions, but we're fortunate to be able to provide the multiple services that we do and deliver them in a competent way because of a strong budget. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I just, I'll just conclude, maybe a little bit of what everyone kind of said is, excellent, excellent budget presentation, Mr. Montori. I do feel, for me personally, it's one of the highest roles and responsibilities I can have as a member of the board, is to work with you on the budget. And you take 1,000 questions on the phone, in your office, and sometimes, I think, questions during a meeting. So in no way, shape, or form, you know, are my questions an attack. Very much like my wife attacks me when I overspend, you know, someone's going to keep me in control. But I mean that in a joking way, where thorough, thorough budget presentation, and you can go through every line item, and again, this is a draft, and like I said, I think it's my utmost role and responsibilities on this board is to work with you on every line item, just like the finance committee will do in the next upcoming months. So appreciate the hard work, not only for yourself and the department heads as well. So, so that's all I wanted to conclude with. So any other final thoughts on the, on the budget?
Can I just ask one question? Is this the earliest we've ever presented a budget, a preview of a budget like this? Does it get earlier every year, or am I imagining that?
This is early for us, but I'd like to be earlier.
I understand, it gives us more time, and it also gives the finance committee more time. I just want to note that for the record, that we're not only fortunate to have a strong budget presentation, but in an incredibly timely manner for people to react.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Yeah. In the, for our next meeting, or our future meeting, if we can have that updated list of when the debt's falling off, the exempt debt?
Absolutely, yes, I'll send that out.
Yeah, that would be great, because I'm, I'm curious about what that will look like in the coming years as it comes off, and...
Yep.
We ask for that all the time, so I know, I know you have it kind of right there, so it'd be great.
All right, very good. Any other questions? All right, solid job, Mr. Montori. You're still on the floor, Mr. Montori, so we have a, we have a town council invoice?
Yep, we have a town council invoice for $2,720 for December 1st through December 15th, and I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Mackey. Roll call vote, Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
She votes aye as well. Anything else, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job. Minutes, I don't think we have any minutes, please, the board member reports. How about Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one item. I speak regularly at our meetings now about the zoning bylaw committee and its efforts, so tonight will be no different. We, we continue to meet. Mr. Mackey joins me on that committee, and we had a meeting last week, was a very positive meeting. The next meeting is January 18th, that's a Tuesday evening, the 18th. It will be a public input session, and we, it is the last opportunity for public input into the proposed zoning bylaw. Literally, everything that we have done to date is on the website. We are seeking input in person, by email, any other form of communication that residents feel is acceptable to get in front of us, and we welcome that kind of insight and input, and we will consider those opinions and views. There's also concurrently a survey, informal survey, out on the subject of retail marijuana. And while that survey is not going to be dispositive, the committee is heading in a direction to consider adding retail marijuana as a business option in Tuxbury from a zoning perspective. And your feedback and participation in the process will help to guide us in that decision-making. The survey is open, I think, through January 14th, so just a few more days. And I would encourage residents who have an interest in this subject matter to give us some feedback so we can decide how best to proceed within the context of the zoning bylaw proposal. And that will help us to, to get to the finish line. So as we voted this evening earlier, the warrant for the May town meeting is going to open, and it will close in late February. The committee's goal is to wrap up its business in early February and have something to present as a final warrant article for the May town meeting. We're intent on accomplishing that. We believe we will meet that mandate, and we're in the home stretch. So I would urge residents who are following this topic to take full advantage of the last public input session on January 18th. And then we will present the community in the early part of February with our proposed That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two points. One, I will not belabor, because Mr. Johnson just did such a great job on it, but for the zoning bylaw committee, again, this is the last chance, next Tuesday. We've, the committee has put a significant amount of time in to responding to all of those modes of communication that Mr. Johnson had mentioned. Mr. Sadwick has been very diligent in responding to those emails, bringing the correspondence to us. We are trying to ensure that every possible question, comment, concern is addressed, and next Tuesday is the last opportunity to do that. So if you have some input that you have not yet brought forward, please do so. The second point is the website. We were able to overcome the, the issues that we were having with the vendor. We are now waiting on a final launch date, which should be coming up soon. We are in the process of transferring all of our data from the current website to the new website, so more to follow on that hopefully in the near term. Thank you.
Good stuff, thank you. How about Ms. Stronach?
First of all, I would just like to say that I so appreciate the joy that that project is bringing you and the enthusiasm that you have for it. I truly do appreciate it. So thank you for that. I just would like to say that this Thursday night, we have another elementary school building committee meeting. That project is right on track and still on budget as well, I'd like to add. Since we're talking about the budget, it's going to be at 6:00 PM. I also want to say Happy New Years to everyone, because we hadn't met prior to that, and remind everybody again that nomination papers are being collected at the town clerk's office. So all of those who are interested in participating in town government, I really urge you to think about it and consider giving back to your town in this manner. It is fantastic way to help your town grow. And then the other thing that I'd like to say is, we had a snowstorm this week, and I just want to thank the DPW. I know that they put in some very, very long hours, and I got a few compliments, which don't always come when we have snowstorms from residents, so I just want to extend that thank you to that. I know that we had a tough storm on winter morning that got the best of us, so we're all doing the best we can, but Mother Nature is a beast unto herself, and I really appreciate their work. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, now that we're kind of got the budget in a place, I know that we had talked about the local housing partnership and some next steps for that. If we could get that on a future agenda, not necessarily the next one, but, you know, if we could get that on there so that we kind of clean that up before April, that would be fantastic.
100%. All right, very good. How about Ms. Stronach? Ms. Wellman?
You can't take...
The budget always does that to me.
Believe me, you cannot take two of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Really briefly, the only thing I'm willing to offer tonight is that January 9th was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and so I'd like to express, on behalf of the board, our appreciation to our fine police department that we have here in Tewksbury, and all our officers and administrative staff there. Thank you.
Very good. And I don't have much on my side, I will report back as far as the reuse committee during our next meeting, which is scheduled for January 25th. So with that being said, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, roll call, final roll call vote tonight. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
She votes aye as well. Good night, thank you very much.